All right. Welcome to February 28th Committee of the Whole. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call the members of the Committee of the Whole. Councillor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Fiore.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Moravito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rotundo. Is absent, Councillor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, and Council President Fisganti.
Here.
Here. Now, there's one item on tonight's agenda, and that's a hearing regarding polling locations in the city of Revere.
If I can have Mr. Fahey, the Commissioner of Elections, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner. We had sent correspondence to you, and I spoke with the council president, I think, in early January. Obviously, with the last two years with COVID and with the re-presincting going on and the redistricting that took place, we need to take a fresh look at our polling locations. The re-presincting, just so you know, has finally been completed by the state, literally on Friday. I received an email that they had updated the voter registration information system with our new precinct information. We're going to do a little audit of that over the next week or so to make sure that it's correct, but they did a good job. It took a while. They had to do it in a very short period of time for the entire state, but it did get done, and I think it's pretty good. But we just want to check it out in the next week or so. But obviously, all of that having taken place, we want to take a fresh look at the polling locations, see what worked, what didn't work. So really, this is just an opportunity for us to hear from you. We've spoken to a few of the district councillors who had real specific concerns, but we want to hear from everybody, as well as members of the public. We'll take that information back and, you know, come up with a set of recommendations. I'm joined by Elizabeth Dixon, our board chair. We had a board meeting last week and said, you know, I explained to them what was going on, and, you know, they'll want to weigh in as well, but we'd just like to hear your thoughts about the current polling locations and what you think works, doesn't work, and whatever counsel you have to give us. So appreciate the opportunity, and you all know Ruben as well. Ruben's here, and if you need anything, as far as maps or anything, he can get us hooked up with that. So just happy to hear your thoughts, and I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up, so thank you.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. Do we have any questions from the council? Councillor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, Paul, to Fahey, if you would. I know we spoke, one of the, as everybody knows, I was against this whole re-presinct thing anyways, because I think my ward got the shaft out of the whole thing. We have a precinct 3A that was developed that probably has maybe 200 people in it, and I bet you don't have 50 voters in it. And now we have to set up a full precinct just for this small, little area that was set up, and, you know, I was very disappointed that we didn't have the opportunity to really put our thoughts into it, you know, that it was kind of shoved down our throats because of various things. But I just want to know, based on our discussions, what you came up with?
We did have this discussion, as you know, 23A was, had to be created due to the fact that there's two legislators, and we had to have a subprecinct for that purpose. We really haven't come up with any recommendations yet beyond what we talked about. Really want to hear what folks are interested in doing before we make any kind of recommendations. But as you say, councillor, it's sort of, it's a fait accompli, it's something we have to deal with.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. President, try and expand on what we're talking here. Right now, there are actually four precincts in Ward 2. There were before, but the way it was before was by our choice, not against our choice. And the people that were in 3A before will now vote, which was along the Revere Beach Parkway. Hillside Ave, Albert Charles, Woods Ave, Overlook, Campbell, they all were separated into a 3A district, so they wouldn't have to go all the way over to Shirley Ave before, but now they're all inclusive of 2-1, and will all vote down the Garfield School. I realize, too, that the Garfield School is no longer in my ward, but one thing we're going to have to talk about is, you know, whether or not that was a legitimate thing for them to do, and because now Garfield School is in Ward 1, along with Standish Road, Elliot Road, Porter, Avalon, part of Dick Street. So they'll all vote down the Garfield still, and the people in 2-1 that were in prior to this redistricting will still vote in 2-1. But the new precinct lines, which I had a problem with when we were talking about it, as far as Centennial Ave, and some of those people that are now in, were in 2-2, are now in 23A, and it's only one half of a street that, you know, it's part of Campbell Ave, the even numbers of Campbell Ave. And the question is, can we fit three precincts in the Hyman Tower? Two precincts were there before, 23 and 22 were there before, and now we have to look and see about squeezing in 22, 23, and 23A. So, and the determination that has to be made is whether or not the room is big enough, and if it isn't, where does another precinct go? The Garfield School is totally the other end of the ward for the folks in Shirley Ave to go to, so I have a concern about that. I don't know if Councillor McKenna wanted a precinct in the Garfield School for the new area that she's taking over or not. That's something that she would have to talk to the Election Commission about, but I'm concerned about it. You know, it is a large cost of setting up a separate precinct, and for, if it's 50 votes, I'm not sure, but we're spending a lot of money between a corp and four or five precinct workers, another machine we have to set up, and it just doesn't make any sense. But we're stuck with the precincts and the way they were, but I do want to welcome Councillor Janino to Ward 2, that's a new area, and for her, but I still have the people along Hitchbone Street, and even though they will now vote for, hopefully vote for Representative Janino, and Representative Turco will still have the old section of Ward 2. So that's my play, and I hope I explained everything the way we talked about it, and I just look that we have a commonsensible discussion and eventful decision on this. So thank you.
Councillor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First off, as Councillor Ivan Nowosowski said, I would like to recognize former councillor Jessica Janino, now our State Representative Janino. Welcome, Jessica, and to our very good friend, Representative Jeff Turco, who is doing a great job as well. So great to see members of our state delegation here, and Paul, thank you for being here. I really, I, you know, really haven't had a chance to formally sit down with you or talk to you, but by all accounts, it seems like you're doing a great job and jumping right in, so welcome, look forward to working with you. I'm going to be speaking, coming at it, and really upfront, really offering nothing in the way of how we're redistricting. For those of us that serve at large, it's really irrelevant to us. I mean, when you're running citywide, where the boundaries go, I understand it's all based on, you know, the new numbers of voters and where those lines break down, and that, you know, is done, I always thought was done in conjunction with the ward councillors. I don't know how it happened this time, but typically that has happened, I know, in the past. But from my perspective, the only comments that I really want to offer are, just like to make known, and I know maybe some of it had to do with COVID, but it predates COVID quite honestly, is the constantly changing of voting locations. People seem to be in a constant state of flux. They don't know where they're voting. I mean, just, since I've served in public office, just in my ward in Ward 6, we started off at the Whalen School, then it went to St. Mary's Church, the rector, not the rectory, the lower church. 63 was voting at the fire station. Periodically, they vote downstairs in the Whalen. 61 and 62 are voting in the Susan B. Anthony. Now, that's just in one ward. You know, people I know in the last few elections in Ward 3, and I don't know if Councillor Cogliandro would attest to this, but, you know, as the new Ward 3 councillor, but, you know, to close down two precincts in the Lincoln School, those are heavy precincts there, and put them all down at St. Anthony's. I mean, I'm not one of these voter suppression people, but, you know, people, if they don't, I mean, as much as you say, oh, well, they were informed, no, people don't, people have a lot on their plate. You might send a letter to them, but if they're used to voting there, it's going to be, you know, and then they show up and the doors are locked, where do I go? A lot, in fact, that particular, those two precincts, a lot of people walk there. I mean, if you stood there, and chances are, over time, you might, you'll be around on election days, right, and you'll see people walking there. So it, you know, like, and that's just another example. You know, you've got the Beauchamp VFW we used to vote at, then it's the school, then it, it just seems like it's all around constantly, you know? So I think, you know, one thing, if I were to just give a little unsolicited advice, I would try to come up with some locations and try to stick with them the best you can. Like, if it's going to be a location you think, wow, I don't know how long I can use it, I wouldn't use it. Maybe come up with something else. So, you know, because it does cause a real state of confusion for voters, and we all know how hard it is to get people out to vote anyway these days. I mean, you know, people, there's a real sense of apathy. I mean, unless it's a presidential election, a lot of people, you know, this, you know, there's, you know, the goal is to try to get as many people out to vote as we can, and I think one way we can do that is at least bring a little stability to the polling locations. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Councillor.
President, if I could just respond briefly, because the councillor hit on a couple of points that I think are really important. One is that continuity. I know that COVID drove a lot of the decisions that had to be made, and we're in a different situation, but I don't think, at least from my perspective and not from the board, that we're looking to make any wholesale changes. I think we see, you know, sticking with as much of what works as possible. Things happen, things come up. I think we want to, you know, we have a good relationship with the school department. We've had conversations with them to continue that. The, you know, last year, as you all know better than I do, I came at the tail end of it. I mean, it was, it was an election circus. There were so many elections, and that was a very unusual circumstance, I believe. So we're coming hopefully back into some more normalcy, but obviously, things can happen that would require that. But I think with the schools having good communication, the other piece, and Ruben and I have talked a lot about this, and I think the mayor's directed us as well, is when this is done, to have a really good communication plan. We want to come back to the council and have a separate conversation about how do we get better turnout? How do we do, we've got to do better with signage, communication. You're right, you can get a postcard saying, oh, your polling place has changed, and I know where my postcards end up. They never get into my house. I have a little bin and, you know, the round file in the lobby of my building. Probably a lot of people in that situation. So your point, I just wanted to say, your points are not falling on deaf ears, so thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Councillor Keith.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fahey, you took the words right out of my mouth. The signage, you know, certainly needs to be improved. You know, Ward 4 specifically, as Councillor Rizzo mentioned, the ward councillors do get a little bit more involved in this because it's a little bit more personal, I guess, when it comes to their isolated wards. We recently condensed all of Ward 4 voting to this, to the Hill School, which I think was great, because you had the American Legion, which had to change potentially, then you had the fire station, which was necessary to change because they couldn't, when you have such a small, like, literally a hallway to vote in when they were receiving calls, it was becoming a big problem. So that was going to have to change to potentially the Immaculate Conception Church, which is out of the ward, and then the Lighthouse Nursing Home, which of course, due to COVID, recognized probably not the best place to bring thousands of people. So fortunately, we had the great idea of putting together all at the Hill School, which I think is great. The space is perfect for one full ward, three precincts, it's plenty of room. But what happens, the only confusion that we got was obviously, it had changed a few times, and then we had a special election, we held it at St. Anthony's. That became confusing. We had Saturday voting, that was at St. Anthony's, that became a little confusing. So I would recommend, if we have to do some form of early voting, we should, you know, better communicate. But then the signage, you shouldn't be able to drive down Park Avenue, Main Strip, or adjacent streets and not know that there's voting at that location. And unfortunately, the only signs that you would see was there was a sticker on the window with a small arrow. It doesn't catch your eye, it doesn't, you know, no one got that attention. Overall, pretty good job, but you said, communication, signage, and just the outreach in different ways, shapes, and forms will be important. Everyone gets these postcards, everyone knows the month leading to election, they get 100 mailers that, quite frankly, they probably, we hate to hear this, but they probably throw them in the trash. So it's something that I think that we can definitely focus on. But I did like the one spot for the entire ward. I thought eventually, with repetition, it'll reduce a lot of confusion for Ward 4. So thank you.
Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, thank you for being here this evening. I just have a brief comment, and I hope we are considering keeping, like, the Liston Towers, Hyman Towers, areas with a lot of low income, no, not a lot of transportation in the building that people own, and I think that is, would have a major effect on those buildings in the voting areas, as well as the Lighthouse Nursing Home and areas like that. I just hope that we keep those in mind and in play. Thank you.
Mr. President, just in response, again, COVID, there was a challenge, we, my predecessor was very aggressive about doing supervised absentee voting in areas with seniors, and we just couldn't do it. So we did a lot more mail-in, a lot more early voting. Right now, the early voting, it's not official yet. I know the legislators are working on a final bill, and I believe, I won't speak for them, but I think there's going to be some form of early voting. We should know fairly soon what that's going to look like. I think, my opinion is, we need to be aggressive about early voting in those locations where we know we have an identified population of folks who it's just going to, it's just going to be to their advantage. We have, you know, there's going to be one or two precincts where we're going to have to make some tough calls, if the polling place is here and other people live here, but what if we flip it? And so, like, I think the Plan B, in addition to the communications, is going to be maybe some targeted, whether it's the supervised absentee voting, some early voting. So that's, when we want to come back and talk with you once we've sort of finalized the locations and say, all right, how do we make, and again, particularly with the ward councillors, but with any of you who are interested, because like you said, councillor, you represent the whole city, so it's not as big, but it is, because you have constituents who are concerned. So I think that'll be the next piece of this, but absolutely hear what you're saying.
Councillor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here tonight, and I know I shared some thoughts with you via email, but I just want to kind of, for the public's sake of occasion, kind of dive into those. And Councillor Rizzo was correct, Ward 6, you know, over the years, has been bounced around. You forgot one, we at one point voted at the old ITAN, years and years ago. So Ward 6 voters have kind of voted, you know, all over the place, and North Revere is a very, I'll say, special neighborhood in the city. It is kind of isolated, it's, you know, you have to get through Linden Square to come down to vote in West Revere, and they always liked having the fire station. I understand the challenges the fire station presented, and during COVID, I was, you know, really adamant that we did not, that we should not have moved 63 to West Revere. However, what I was most worried about was that it was going to kind of disenfranchise people, they weren't going to come down to West Revere to vote. I looked at the numbers, the turnout numbers from, you know, actually from 2015 going to 2021, and there was actually a jump, and it was around the same, but a bit of a jump in the amount of people, the percentage, the people who voted in 63. So I'm okay with keeping, you know, everything at the West Revere School complex. However, I, and I had mentioned this in my email, 61 and 62 vote in the gym, 63 votes in the cafeteria. I had a gentleman who lives on a street that is in, partially in 62, I think 62, or 61, in 63. So he went in to vote, and he went in the gym first, they sent him to the cafeteria to 63. 63 said, oh, no, your house is in, you know, whichever precinct it was, he had to go back to the gym. So he got really frustrated, and he said, you know what, I might not even vote, I'm just, you know. So if we could, I know the gym is large enough, and now that we're on the backside of the pandemic, if we could merge, like the Hill School in Ward 4, if we could merge all three precincts to that one location, I think it will streamline and just make it easier. And Councillor Keith mentioned the signage, I had mentioned that, too. One other thing about signage, I would say, is for a long time, we had large poster boards at each of the voting precincts with the street listings and the numbers, you know, if you're at 50, whatever, you're in 62 or whichever. If we could get those signs remade up, I know Commissioner Colletta had said that they've kind of been lost over time, but I really think it would be important for the Election Department to recreate those and put them at the polling locations, and that's all I've got. So thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, for a moment, if you don't mind, just to respond. Absolutely, on the signage, I think we need to think differently about, it's great to have, from our perspective, from an efficiency perspective, to have a combined location, but it creates challenges, and you're right, particularly when, if everyone's going in the same door, it's one thing, but if they're going in different doors, having that kind of signage is going to be really important. So point taken, thank you.
Councillor Moravito.
Thank you. I have a question for you. Are there any regulations preventing a city from having one centralized voting location, like for the entire city?
I'm still researching this. A lot of the people that I speak with on a regular basis are town clerks, and as you know, most communities don't have a separate election department, per se, so in towns, that happens a lot. I don't think there's anything prohibiting it. I know the question came up about, and I know Councillor Nowosowski mentioned it, your precinct is here, but your voting location's in the next precinct over. That's okay. What you can't do is leapfrog over, you know, have a precinct in the middle and have people literally have to cross another precinct. In theory, I think that that is possible. I would say probably for a community of this size. I haven't seen it, and again, I'm moot with the job.
Yeah, I don't think I'd be a proponent of that.
When I was in Amesbury, we had six precincts, one voting location, and it made perfect sense, but it was a much smaller community.
Yeah, I don't think I'd be a proponent. I was just wondering if there was anything, anyone, any laws preventing us from doing that. I am a proponent of having one voting location per ward. I think that's very useful. As, some suggestions, in Ward 1, everyone complains about finding the voting location, finding the entrance, it's not lit up. I could not find it. Actually, the Congresswoman, Congresswoman Clark, she had made a comment as well, that it was hard to find the location, hard to see where the entrance was. As far as Ward 2, I agree with Councillor Silvestri, not just in Ward 2, but throughout the city, trying to make it convenient for the elderly and those who aren't able to get to a location to vote. So I want to do more outreach. That's what I would like you to do, outreach to those who are disabled, anyone elderly. Maybe if there's any way we can utilize a senior shuttle if people need to be picked up, because not everyone can afford it. And that's about it.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor McKenna.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Commissioner, I just want to say that I have three, I have a big problem in my ward because I have three precincts. And the third precinct, Precinct Three, is on the other side of the city. It's over a bridge, it's about two miles away from where we're voting. We vote at the Beechmont School, and that's a big problem with signage, because what happens is, when people vote in that Beechmont School, they have to go through a parking lot, and it's at the very end of the parking lot is the gym. And like he said, it's hard to find the door. But the big thing is, I think that we should open up at least the Immaculate Conception for Precinct Three, because we do have a lot of seniors there. And like Counselor Rizzo said, people like to walk. So, if, they're not going to walk to Beechmont from Central Ave and Vinyl Street and, you know, Mill Street. So, I really do think that we need another location there where we are separated so far away from each other. Thank you.
Counselor Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the Commissioner, Commissioner Fahey, congratulations. Welcome to Revere. You'll find it's a little bit different than Amesbury. But by the time you figure it out, you'll be at the retirement board. Just to touch on that redistricting that was mentioned, you know, Counselor Cogliano and myself being the rookies here, we campaigned in one area, we showed up, and the two outgoing counselors, with the, went out, we came in, the only two precincts in the city that were flipped. And again, no reflection on you, you're the new guy here. But, you know, they flipped the precincts, and it couldn't be a numbers game because there was no juggling. So, that was very disheartening. You had two counselors leaving, and then you had two coming in, and they were the only two that had to deal with a situation like that. So, that's just my frustration with that, though I'm happy to represent any part of the city. Years ago, I was a counselor at large, so I know these people everywhere, and I'm very happy to represent. As Counsel Cogliano and I had discussed along the way, we'll both continue to represent Ward 53, and we'll both continue to represent Ward 33. But just touching, if you could just, I'm of the position, I respect the position of my colleagues, of that we should, if anything, you know, keep the precincts at the same number, as Counsel Rizzo pointed out. I mean, you know, voter apathy, voter participation is down, you know, some elections, it's in the teens. So, I, you know, as Counselor Sevastri said, the elderly, you know, there are parts of my ward that, you know, people, you know, they don't have cars, you know. So, I would be of the position that I would like to see, very least, the same amount of The Sata House is a concern of mine, and I think everybody would understand that, it's the largest voting population in the entire city, so I would want to make sure that that's not touched. Voter participation in my ward might drop to about 8%. But, I shouldn't say that, because our ward was the highest voting precinct in the city in the last election. But, again, to touch on North Revere, I think it's a very special situation. I know it's not my ward, but having represented them over the years in the past, they always have felt disenfranchised, they've never really felt part of the mainstream community. So, anything we can do, I would be of the position to accommodate those folks. Certainly want to step on Counsel Serino's toes, but I think encouraging voter participation. In addition, I'm wondering if you could just touch base on the difference between absentee, for the edification of the public, absentee voting, mail-in voting? Could you just expound upon that a little bit?
So, again, we're waiting to see what that will look like. In the, there's a bill in the legislature that, every indication is the House and Senate are working on their disagreements, there will be some form of early voting. And again, I wasn't here, but I know that there was early voting held at St. Anthony's prior to, at least the last two previous elections. You know, absentee voting has always existed. We really want to try to push that much more aggressively for folks. It was done during COVID, again, because people didn't want to be going out to vote, particularly older people, which was understandable, we want to make sure they were going to be enfranchised. So, still having mail-in voting options, but I would really like to explore these early voting options a little bit better. Do we, and this is hypothetical, but do we only have one early voting location for the whole city, or do we focus those on areas where, if we have to make a call and say, we, you know, we're not going to be able to give Counselor X the precinct that they want, but what we will do is have an early voting location to allow people to vote, as well as absentee. That's part of the whole communication piece that we want to come back and talk with you about, probably in April. Once we know what the lines are going to be, some of you will be happy, some of you won't, it's totally understandable. But then, how do we make it work? Because that's, ultimately, that's the real goal. So, those tools, the absentee voting, again, the supervised absentee voting in nursing homes, the early voting, maybe having that be a little more spread out over the city. You know, the timing with the fall elections, the primaries will be the day after Labor Day. The last time this happened, if you remember, was 2018. I, you know, I understand the reasons, it's competing, things about Jewish holidays and certain number of days that, before the November election. Personally, I think it's unfortunate, because, you know, I'm sure the first thing people think about coming back after Labor Day weekend is, I got to go vote the next day. So, I think we, you know, doing some earlier things, but then we're in the summer, you know, and are people really going to be focused? So, I hear you, and so I want to use as many of those kind of opportunities, as well as a more aggressive communication strategy than just the postcard.
Well, I want to thank you and wish you well. It's refreshing, the kind of exchange and being candid with us, I appreciate that. Maybe I could ask a question to Mr. Cantor, because I understand he headed up the redistricting on behalf of the administration.
Counselor.
Oh, you're sorry. We have not.
Good.
All right. It's good to put a face with the name. On 53 and 33, they were wholesale flipped.
Yes.
So, it really, I couldn't understand how it would have anything to do with the numbers, because do it, so what was the reasoning behind it? I heard things like time travel from one part of the ward to the other part.
Right. So, there was, I was not necessarily prepared to talk about this, but I can certainly give it my best. So, we talked over the course of a number of hearings about the fact that there were a lot of people who were at the southern edge of Ward Five who felt very much disconnected from the rest of Ward Five. And we had a lot of comments that came in through our public process that said, you know, why are we in Ward Five? It makes much more sense to reunite us with sort of the folks in Ward Three or other parts of the city. And so, we did some conversations with Counselor Cogliano, with some of the folks who lived in those areas, to see if it would make any sense for us to do that. We had a pretty extensive public process, and we listened to testimony, and by the end of the process, we did not get a single comment against the flip, and we had a lot of comments in favor of the flip. So, and just as an example, the time travel that you brought up, so I did, just as a test, a Google map test of, at rush hour, how long does it take to get from one corner of the old Ward Five to, or the current Ward Five to the, to the, to the northern corner? And it was something like 40 minutes in some traffic situations.
I don't find the correlation between time, the people from the Revere High School area weren't going down to the Point of Pines to vote. So, I don't, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But regardless, I'm happy to represent the people of Revere Street. And, you know, it's just disheartening, because I worked so hard, as Counselor Cogliano did, up in his area, by up and around the high school, and the people, one of their concerns was lack of representation, so I was eager to represent them, and we continue to represent them.
I appreciate that.
And I look forward to Revere Street, and it was nice to meet you.
You as well.
Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, Mr. Fahey. I want to thank you and Ruben for the time we had the other day, we had a very good discussion. I just want to reiterate, and Counselor Rizzo hit the nail on the head, we need to reopen the Lincoln School as a polling location for 31 and 32. During the last election, I had one of my team members standing there, we must have directed 50 residents to St. Anthony's. I trust, I trust you and your department that you guys are going to do a good job with, you know, communicating with the public to where and when all the voting is. I do have a quick question, though. Has the talk of transportation come up? Busing elderly people, whatever it might be?
Mr. President, through you to the Counselor, yes. I mean, that's something that we've started to talk about. I know one of the counselors mentioned about, you know, existing senior shuttle services and so forth, so that's definitely a possibility as well. The easier tools are the mail-in voting, are the early voting and so forth, but there are people still want, there are people, and I think sometimes older people still want to go and vote, so offering those opportunities. And again, if we do some kind of a different approach to early voting, and maybe just have transportation on those days, to take folks in an organized fashion to go to early voting, or again, to do the supervised absentee voting at the location. So, those are options, I think, that, you know, people say about COVID, some good things, some things came out of it that we do business differently, and I think in terms of elections, this is one of them, is people are thinking much more out of the box than they did previously. And so, I'm lucky to come in at the beginning of that kind of thinking, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. What I'd like to do is open it up to the public, and since we do have our state delegation here, I want to first thank both of Madam Representative Janino and Representative Turco for being here, and if Representative Turco would like to take the podium, if you'd like to talk about it, or... Welcome.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words on this issue. You know, I wrote a few notes after listening to some of the comments. This is clearly a city issue, 100% city issue, and I support whatever you ultimately conclude is best for the city of Revere. But I do think, generally speaking, that consolidation of precincts is a good idea. I think when you make it more manageable, the Votes Act, which is pending right now in a conference committee with House and Senate, has a few things that I think will make it easier for cities and towns of the Commonwealth to do consolidation. Number one, the House bill right now lowers the time period to register to vote prior to the election from 20 days to 10 days. It mandates 14 days of early voting. It mandates no-excuse absentee voting. In addition, so I think those, the early voting, you know, talking, where I heard Mr. Fahey talk about, you can use those days to deal with some of the Liston Towers, potentially Hyman Towers, to use that as an early, maybe put four of those days aside for those senior housing complexes, while you also then use the early voting. I mean, I think when you look at it, people are creatures of habit. And so, once, whenever you make a change, as long as you make a change, and you say, we're going to stick with this for a while, I think you'll hopefully get some increased voting. But let's look at this last election, I mean, the special election for the Senate. You know, the city of Revere went out of its way to encourage people to come out and vote, and the vote turnout was abysmal. And so, even with the number of precincts, even with all the good efforts of everyone here, trying to encourage people to vote, you know, we do have to do a better job of getting the message out to people. You know, all you got to do is turn on the news today and see what's going on, you know, terribly happening in Ukraine, and these poor people that, you know, would love to be able to vote in peace and harmony, and we got the right to roll out of bed and go vote, and 80% of the people in the city don't get out and do it, and it's shameful. I shouldn't be saying that in an election year, but it's true. I mean, people should get up, and they should get out and vote, and even if you don't like your candidates, go cast a blank ballot, show people that you care enough to vote and make our system work. One other comment, I just want to say, Counsel Serino, Vice President Serino commented on the old billboards with the street listings at the locations, and just from, you know, the technological era, I mean, maybe it makes sense to have iPads at each one of the precincts where somebody, you could, it's that great app, you can go online, where do I vote? Who's my rep? Who's my counselor? To be able to walk in, especially if things change, to be able to walk into a precinct and have an iPad, hey, where do you, you know, where do I vote? That man that went to the cafeteria, or the other bill, you know, the gym, would have just typed his name in, and boom, here's where you vote. So, I encourage the city to look at this, I encourage the Election Commission, I think it's great that they're looking at the idea of consolidation, but doing it where we respect these populations, seniors that we need to care for, and hopefully, the early voting, once we get the Votes Act passed, will help solve some of that. So, sorry if I went too long. Rep. Janino.
Thank you, Rep. Turco. This is the first time in 10 years, I'm speaking on this side of the bench, so this is weird. But it's, no, I'm happy to be here, guys, and I'm happy to be here to talk about this issue. You know, as an at-large counselor for 10 years, I understand both perspectives that we're talking about, especially now that my district is divided. So, I went from having the whole city of Revere where it wasn't as much of an issue to now, there are literally streets, as some of my colleagues mentioned, in their ward that our rep districts are divided, that you could live on one side of a street and vote for Rep. Turco on one side and have me on your ballot. So, it's definitely a concern. I live in Counselor Serino's ward, and I can tell you firsthand, it was a little confusing. I actually texted him on Election Day because I wasn't sure if the gym was open, because there was no signage. So, it's important that when we decide what locations we have, that they are clearly marked, and that, as a group, all of us are doing our part to make sure we're advertising this, that we're sharing the information. I know we put it in the paper, we put it on Facebook, but it's important that we're really letting people know where they vote, right? As simple as that sounds, it's really important. I'm also in favor of consolidating the locations. You know, if you were to ask me about this before COVID, I don't know how I would have felt, because as a city, we had over 20 locations that myself and my colleagues used to deliver coffee and donuts to in the morning on Election Day, and you know how hard it is getting to all of them, right, Counselor? So, it was, it's a habit, we're creatures of habit, right? In Ward Six, we got shuffled around a little bit, you know, I voted at the St. Mary's, I voted at the Whalen School, I voted upstairs, I voted downstairs, I voted around the side. So, it will be helpful that, as this process happens, that we find locations that are stable, that aren't impacting our school days, if possible, that we can put them in parts of the schools that don't disrupt students. If they're in our public safety buildings, they're in sound buildings, unlike the Point of Pines former station and Freeman Street. So, these are all really important things, right? But now that we've went through the last election and the pandemic, and we saw that we could limit the number of locations, still engage people, you know, as my colleague, Rep. Turco, mentioned the Votes Act, that'll help increase voter accessibility and the ability to get a ballot if you have transportation issues, or if you have other challenges, if you're traveling, if you're a student in college, whatever it might be. I think that now, we're in a much better situation to do this. So, I do think it's a good idea that we consolidate, I think it'll make life easier in the long run, but just like everything, it's a process, right? So, it's going to take a little time to get used to, but, you know, you have two allies in the state that are here to help you and be a resource to any of the counselors, and thank you.
Well, thank you to both of you, welcome back, Madam Representative, and always a pleasure seeing both of you, but especially Madam Representative Janino. Well, I think enough has been said on this, and you guys all hit the nail on the head, and it seems like location and signage seems to be the biggest issue here. And I want to first thank Commissioner Fahey for reaching out and getting ahead of this now and starting the process. And I think it would be best to keep this and table this hearing for the next hearing, and keep it in the Committee of the Whole. So, when the process continues and you've made some progress, I'd love to have you up here again and discussing this further. So, I want to thank you again for being here, and congratulations on the new position, you're fitting in just well. Thank you. And I believe that be, I'd like to open it up to any other, if there's any other questions from the public. Seeing and hearing none, I think this concludes the Committee of the Whole meeting today. Thank you.